Yeah.
Yeah.
Hmm?
All right, so this stands in the fight for allegiance, please.
Don't do your thing anywhere.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I call this meeting of Independence School District 544 to order. Kirby is our filling clerk. Will you establish one for us first?
I will. Natalie Hudson.
Here.
Melanie Cole. Matthew Lemke.
Here.
Missy Hermes. Steven Vigasa.
Here.
And Kirby Anderson here. We have it for.
Thank you. We need to approve the agenda. There is no modification, so somebody offer a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Someone.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Agenda passes. Moving on to acknowledgements today. We want to say thank you to Caitlin Kinder for the donation of a percussion kit to the KSS Music Department and to Jason Marquette for the donation to the Otter Angel account, an account created to anonymous assist families unable to pay for student meals. I'd like to offer that resolution move for its adoption. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Melanie, or I'm sorry, Matthew.
Yes.
Steven Vigasa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson, yes. Natalie Hudson.
Yes.
I don't have to call the ones that aren't here doing.
No. Resolution passes. Thank you. Moving on to.
It's okay.
We'll still work on this.
That's okay.
Moving on to reports, we have Derek Abrams, our Activities Director here to talk about spring sports.
Good morning.
Good morning. You all should have a report in front of you. And as you can see, I have, the last two years for spring, I didn't really have anything. Before that, this is since we put in the online registration, I had some random years, but not 2017. So, as you can see, our numbers again have steadily improved. Baseball was down a couple, but from 44 down to 41. But you can see in golf, boys and girls, and this includes middle school, there's a 7-12 program in middle school kids are participating the entire year with varsity kids. Eastside Boys Golf went from 15 to 20. Girls Golf went from 21 up to 34. That include, when I said including the 13 middle school, nine middle school, that's in that total already. One other one that went down a little bit softball, but there's a reason for that. This was the first year in many that we did not just pull up all the eighth graders basically fill in a ninth grade team. We didn't have a ninth grade team this year, which was by choice. We had, we didn't have enough to form the team, but instead of bringing up all of the eighth graders and quite honestly putting them in a spot that wasn't, they probably weren't ready for, and they struggled, we decided just not to do a ninth grade. About half of the CLC schools did not have a ninth grade softball team because of that. So, our numbers did not include eighth graders like they did many years past, so really our numbers are still pretty good, even though it went down by about seven.
So you had a varsity and a JV?
Varsity and JV.
Yeah. Okay. So your freshmen played JV then?
They played JV.
Gotcha.
And most of them had played last year on the ninth grade anyway, so it was a logical move up for them. And the softball association did a real nice job of getting a lot of games for seventh and eighth graders, getting them ready for that. So we think we'll, we'll see the benefits of that here coming up in the next few years. So, Boys Tennis, again, a pretty, pretty nice jump up from 21 to 35, and both Boys and Girls Track went up. So many accomplishments. Again, there's not as many athletes in the week as you have in the winter or the fall. Really, the season's much shorter, because to be an athlete of the week, you have to be playing games, and it usually doesn't happen until close to May, or at least the last couple of years. So, Aaron Schelstedt for Boys Golf, Mandy Eklund for Girls Golf, Brock Kotchvar for Baseball. I won't read all the names for the all conference and honorable mention, but again, a pretty good showing from all. Look through that. State Tournament Participants. The Girls Golf, Grace Christensen made the state tournament golf very well down there. Boys Track at Robert Sewell, who again finished in the top 10, had, came in with one of the top jumps in the state tournament. And again, Boys and Girls Track is one of those that we are the smallest school in Double A. So we're participating against the biggest schools in the state here. And for these individuals to be able to accomplish this was, these things was a pretty, pretty significant accomplishment. Girls Track, Ainsley Hansen in the high jumps, Sabrina Frani in the 300 high hurdles. Of course, Ainsley and Sabrina will be back again next year, so. As a summary for the spring sports, again, very good spring season despite the start. And the start's always the toughest. Spring is difficult. It's the first time in many years we've had over 200 out in the spring, just because of the weather. It gets frustrating being indoors for six weeks, or five weeks to before the season, but despite that, they're all moving in the right direction. We had a very good May, once we started playing, playing games. So we're seeing a lot of improvement and depth being built, so we have a very positive spring. And just one quick note, looking at our, the evaluations I do for each program, when I look at the data, the retention rate's very high right now, which is one of the reasons for these, these numbers going down, along with being multi-sport athletes. So, so everything that I'm seeing right now is a trend upward. Any questions, though?
Can I just ask you a question between 2018 and 2019? Does 2018, does that include the middle school or does not?
It does. It's, it's the same numbers.
Okay.
Yep, same numbers, I included, except for the softball, of course.
Sure.
So as we get bigger, you know, our classes are coming up that are bigger, what, any, you know, anything you see for two years, we're probably going to be in a smaller class, and then we're probably going to, going to jump back, is that right?
My prediction's in two years. And the sports that we went down in class, football, which will be kind of a natural thing for football, and football's such a numbers game with linemen and everything, so that made a lot of sense. We're gonna, our class or our section will now be our district that we've been playing in already. So that, that makes a lot of sense. Baseball and softball, too. And then basketball as well, Boys and Girls Basketball. And I, I see that for two years for sure. We're not the biggest school in the class that we dropped down to. In fact, I think there's about nine or 10 schools that are still bigger than we are in, in the class we'll go to, but it really makes sense for our numbers. And there are a few that will still be the small one, but in two years, I, I see us probably jumping back up, but four years for sure, because they just count nine through 12, so our bigger classes.
Which spring sports went to another class, or another, yeah, to another level? Yeah.
Baseball and softball were the only two. Tennis was already down to Class A for Boys, not Girls. But Boys was already Class A Track. We are the smallest. The cutoff number is our number, which was, I want to say 650, or no, 550.
Did the State High School League, though, I didn't answer, ask the question correctly, did they go to another class in, like, baseball went from two classes to three? They, they didn't?
We went from, there's four classes in baseball and softball, we went from 3A to 2A.
Okay, alright.
They will be adding a class in cross-country.
Okay.
And soccer.
Okay, I, I knew they were adding a class.
That'll be in the 21, just because soccer goes from Class A right now, which there's 2A and there's 1A. Class A goes from Bemidji all the way down to like Hillcrest or Warner. And so they added a third class for soccer.
Okay.
Any other questions for Derek? Thank you. Thank you, please. Our next report will come from Superintendent.
You know, the, this is one of the most full agendas we've had since I've been here, so it's got, so my report is, thank you, you know, thanks to the community, and it's been a good 13 years, and we'll just, we'll just leave. It's been the long goodbye. I think I, I think I told the board last June that I was planning on retiring, and then you go, we had a retreat to plan the whole replacement plaza and stuff like, so it's time. So, yeah, we'll, we'll leave it at that.
Sounds good. Thank you, Superintendent. General Consent Items. We have the minutes for the June 10th, 2019 Board Meeting Personnel, Elaine Jenkey.
Yes, we are kind of back in the saddle and getting ready for the new school year here. Support Staff Resignations, of course, as we do the transitions, we're always going to have resignations, and then obviously hires following that. But we have two under that category, Amy Hosh, Special Ed Para, and then Pauline Nelson, Noon Hour Supervisor. Both of those have placed their resignations into me. Support Staff Hire, we have hired Amber Hoblen for our Activities Secretary, and she'll begin here in July. And then Certified Staff Hire is Amy Glade as a kindergarten teacher at McKinley. And remember, at the last Board Meeting, the Board approved the 10th section of kindergarten, and hence this is hired to fill that 10th section. And so I just request approval from the School Board on all these.
So Amy is returning, if you remember that name, she was one year at Alexandria, and now is returning, and just a great, great kindergarten teacher, so lucky to have her back.
With that, do I have a motion to approve the General Consent Items?
Someone?
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? General Consent Items pass. Moving on to old business, we have the FY '20 School District Financial Budget. This was presented earlier, and we had our first reading last time, and this is action, and we do need to approve this if we're going to have a functioning school district in July 1st. So do I have a motion to approve the FY '20 School District Financial Budget?
Someone?
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Just to let you know that the Finance Committee did meet on this, and we went through it, and I don't think they had any objections to it. Just a couple of points, it will be, our general fund balance will be at 5.1 million or 16%, which is down from about the 20. But the way I budget conservatively and stuff, it's showing that this year is likely going to be a better year than expected. So I think we'll probably, a year from now, be talking about how we came in at around 20%, just with the state, which is state average. This is also the first time that the general fund budget came in at over 30 million. Just to give you a hint, when I started here, it was 90 million. So it's, that's inflation for you. And it will be posted to the website here after this meeting.
Any questions or comments?
Just a comment, thanks for all your hard work. There's a lot of, a lot of numbers, appreciate it.
Oh, and a happy fiscal new year to you all.
On the first.
On the first, until I won.
Well, accounting human error.
Yeah.
With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item number two is we have the new, new school board policy, Policy 707, Transportation of Homeless Students. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Someone?
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
This is required by the audit, and, and so this transportation policy, it's a Minnesota, MSBA, Minnesota School Association policy, and we just are approving the homeless students section of that full transportation policy. So this is a mandate needed for our audit.
With that, any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Moving on to new business, we have a resolution regarding the Board Control of Extracurricular Activities. Whereas Minnesota Session Laws, 2019, First Special Session, Chapter 11, Article 1, Section 5, will require changes in the accounting for student activity funds, and school boards must take charge of and control all student activities of the public schools in the district, and that all money received or expended for extracurricular activities shall be recorded in the same manner as other revenue and expenditures of the district. Therefore, be resolved by the School Board of Fergus Falls Public Schools, Independent School District Number 544, directs the district administration to implement the requirements of Minnesota Session Law Laws in 2019, First Special Session, Chapter 11, Article 1, Section 5. With that, would somebody offer that resolution move for its adoption?
I'll make that resolution.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Discussion?
This is a response to a nationwide thing called Governmental Accounting Standards Board, a GASB pronouncement. And apparently there is abuse that's widespread in these student activity accounts nationwide. And Minnesota's taken a step to mandate that everybody comply. Basically, what it'll do is, and it varies from district to district, but some districts have this money sitting in a special checking account, it's not run through the regular accounting system, and of course, it's basically managed by boosters and so forth. By bringing it into the school district, all of the rules that have to be applied to, to schools have to then be applied to these student activity funds. So we're going to be going through a process here of sorting out what we have and what's going to go away, what's going to be brought in, what has to be retained, and then of course, telling the people who are the monies that are retained, we'll have new restrictions on them. So, it's what happens when people get caught with their hand in the cookie jar.
So give an example for us.
An example? Well, for example, our Student Council right now has the ability to go out and raise funds, and then make donations to food show for what have you. By moving it into school district realm, they will not be able to do that anymore, or at least under the rules that they, as they exist today. So it's going to be a hindrance to them. Others, they've had the benefit of the school district, and I'm not, I'm just going to throw one out there, one that's questionable is like the band boosters, and whether they will be allowed to come in. They may more than likely be a better candidate to form their own 501(c)(3) and do their own business. I'm not saying anything's going wrong with the band, it's just the way they operate may not be compatible with the way that we have to do it. So, we'll have to go through that sorting process, the state doesn't have all of its rules down yet, but we will hear about it here in about September, October, and then start making our moves.
But there will be ways around, I mean, it's not, we're just going to cut off capability. We'll figure out a way to make it work, it's just.
Booster clubs will be on their own.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's not like we're not saying we're, booster clubs are gone or can't raise funds, they just won't be under control. I, I think our 544 Education Foundation is going to become more valuable in a scenario where they'll be working with some booster clubs and some different fundraisers type things, and those types of entities.
Because it's, and it can initially sound scary, but I think, like you said, they don't have all of their open a group or whatever, they just need to, the schools have to figure out how to, how to deal with it, is all, right?
Exactly.
And I think once we've figured out the details in that, we can go back to the foundation and help them understand a little bit better too, what they can step up and do to help out.
And again, this is a mandate.
Right.
We have to do this, there's no other choice.
Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Steven Vigasa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson, yes. Natalie Hudson.
Yes.
Motion carry. I'm sorry, resolution carry.
Thank you. Item number two is our annual invitation for quotes for milk and related products. Would somebody like to offer that motion?
I will do it in Melanie's. I move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Annual, to get a quote for annual milk related products.
In honor of Melanie Cole for both watching. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Motion. There we go, that's good.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item number three is we have the 2019-2020 Health and Safety Executive Summary of Written Plans. And before we entertain that motion, Mark, do you want to talk on that?
I can, I can actually, it's, it's an annual review. The report basically says if there's indoor air quality issues, who do they go to? If there's asbestos issues? So it itemizes all the different health hazards, and where does a staff member or community member go to find out information? And all of that information is now stored in the District Office Conference Rooms, and Jeff Drake will be taking over my role as Health and Safety Coordinator as well.
With that, do we have a motion, does somebody make a motion to approve?
Someone?
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item number four is we have the acceptance of 2019-2020 First Dakota Indemnity Workers' Comp Insurance Quote in the amount of $49,919 annually. Mark, do you want to comment on this before we?
Alright, sounds good. This is an annual bid that we put out for our work comp insurance, and we had three bidders. First Indemnity at $49,919 is also our current vendor, so this will be the second year in a row if we go with them. Two other bids, one was from a company called Secura at $52,800, and then the third one was Ram, which we were with for several years prior. They came in at $56,900. Just to let you know that this premium back in the fiscal '14 year was at $124,700. We've done a lot to improve our work comp.
An example of that is doing training with staff on slips and falls and things like that, so our, we've really reduced our risk to our employees, it's been good.
Plus, we've contracted with a company to work with the local vendors in town and processing claims quicker and so forth, more accurately.
Which has been a very big positive.
Yes.
With that, do I have somebody that would make the motion to approve the quote that's presented?
Someone?
Do we have a second?
Of course I can.
Any discussion? All of them in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item number five, we have the Municipal Storm and Sewer Agreement between Independence School District 544 and the City of Fergus Falls, effective on June 24th, 2019. Mark, do you want to comment on that for any?
Sure, and I'll actually comment on this one and the next one as well. This is part of the roadway project that's taking place down near the Roosevelt Gym, that Ohio Island Avenue, Summit Avenue area. We are granting the city the ability to bury their pipes along the boulevards owned by the city, by the school district. In the past, they ran them across the levee, and they don't want to do that kind of thing anymore. So they're, they're going to pay us $17,900 to, for that purpose, and I went through the calculations that they did, it's all based on market value and footage and things like that. Also related to this is we're going to be assessed for our share of that work, and of course, we have a considerable amount of lineal feat that is affected by this, and so we will actually pay $87,447 in assessments on, on that road work and, and street work, or pipe work. So basically, $87,000 out, $17,900 back in, there you go.
With that, will somebody offer this motion?
For approval? Someone?
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any comments or discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item number six is the Roadway Utility Agreement between Independence School District 544 and the City of Fergus Falls, effective June 24th, 2019. Would somebody offer that motion to approve?
Someone?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion on this motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item number seven is the Ground Lease Agreement between Independence School District 544 and the Fergus Falls Hockey Association, effective June 24th, 2019. Mark Maston, do you want to speak on that?
Certainly. The Youth Hockey Association is desiring to build a training facility on the south side of the arena. That land is school district property, and so what this is, is a ground lease, that, that area just underneath that little building will be leased out all the way through the year 2100, which coincides with what we have with the hockey arena. There's 30-year terms on this, and all that coincides with the ice arena, but if it goes to the roadway, it'll be 2100, and then somebody else can do it. I do not plan to do that. That's an interesting number.
With that, do I have a motion to approve?
Someone?
I'll take Steve. And a second?
I'll take second.
Carry. Discussion or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item number eight is our fiscal year, FY 2021, Application for Long-Term Facility Maintenance Revenue Statement of Assurance. Mark Maston, you must be the answer for the motion.
Sure.
Mark showed it.
Yeah, that's my show today. This is an annual report that goes to the state, and they want you to plan 10 years in advance on your long-term facilities, and, which is virtually impossible, of course, because pipes and bricks don't follow a schedule like that. But nonetheless, it is there to try to get you to plan a little bit, and then at the same time, it generates about $1.3 million in revenue for the school district to maintain this facility. So the other piece that goes along with this is a statement of assurances that must be signed by the superintendent.
So with that, does, will somebody offer the motion to approve the 2021 application?
Someone?
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
I don't know, did you want to put it up on the screen, or, or did anybody read it? Or, okay.
This is all print? Yes, that's all.
Yeah, it was, it was very, very difficult to put on the screen.
But basically, it's just showing some health and safety expenditures in there that we have ongoing for fire safety and for maintenance of our health, health and safety plan, and then put in some of the expenditures for this year, and then was very generic numbers thereafter, just because we have so many things that are maybe changing now with a new superintendent and a strategic plan, and blah, 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 so.
And this is tied also to our long-term maintenance funds, coming in from the state, so that's why it's required.
That's why it's required.
Which is very valuable to Fergus Falls, and though, truthfully, to all the school districts.
To all the school districts across the state, yep.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item number nine is ISD 544 Actuarial Evaluation Report, Other Post-Employment Benefits Under GASB, Statement 75. Mark, do you want to comment on that first?
This is an, a report that's required every two years, goes into our audit, and its purpose is to inform the school board of its long-term obligations to employees who you may have offered health insurance through an employment contract or something that's ongoing. And in some communities and school district, this is a big deal, because they have extended those benefits to their retirees. Fergus Falls Public Schools does not do this, and so, but we're still required to do the report. So the report will show that we have $1.1 million of implicit rate subsidy, which means that retirees who are on our insurance plan are benefiting by $1.147 million, because they have cheaper insurance than what they would have if they were on, out in the public. So if we were to start a fund to cover that, we would fund it with money on one hand, and then take the money and give it to ourselves on the other side. So it really is kind of a stupid report for us, but it's required, so here you go.
Because our retirees pay for their own health insurance benefits.
Our retirees pay for their own benefits.
So we'd have no encumbrances. So we'd have no encumbrances.
So if Darrell Thompson was here, he could shake his head and make the motion.
That is true. He would. So with that, will somebody offer this motion for approval?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 10 is a memorandum of understanding between Independent School District 544 and the Department of Interior, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Mark Maston?
Hmm.
Come on up.
Uh, this is a, basically a lease agreement between us and Fish and Wildlife Service for the use of the Prairie Wetland classrooms. In the old, under the old contracts, we paid about $19,000 a year for, basically for utilities. But there was a problem always in who would replace what in terms of repairs and furniture and what have you. So we, we decided we would come up with a plan where the, uh, Fish and Wildlife Service would be responsible for that. It basically doubled the rent then, of course, because of some deferred maintenance. It'll go from $19,000, like I said, up to about $41,000. And then over the next five years, it actually declines down to about $33,000. The reason it's so high in the first year is because of deferred maintenance. They want to get some things done. They'll produce a list, we'll approve it, and Fish and Wildlife will then be responsible for making the repairs. There's always a question like, the original tables, for example, in the classroom were purchased under the contract when the place was built. So it belonged to the Fish and Wildlife Service, but then as it wore out and something needs to be replaced, it was, well, the school district should pay for it. And we said, no, it's your stuff, you need to replace it. This eliminates that. Puts it squarely on the Fish and Wildlife Service.
With that, will somebody offer this motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Uh, any discussion or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 11 is Wage Adjustment for Substitute Staff Positions Effective 2019 through 2020 School Year. Certified Teachers Substitutes will be $118 a day or $59 for a half a day. And substitute staff substitutes?
Support staff.
Supports, what is a substitute?
Lots of S's.
Yes, Support Staff Substitutes is $14 an hour. Uh, will somebody offer that motion for approval? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion or comments on that?
Well, my wife is a sub and I don't really want to vote on this, but would that mess up our quorum?
Yeah, you got to vote on it. Yeah, in fact, you have to.
Well, it really isn't an issue because she doesn't have to accept to be sub. I mean, so you aren't necessarily having an issue here at all because maybe she subs, maybe she doesn't.
Right.
And maybe she won't sub for 1920.
It's rare, it's very seldom, but I just thought I'd mention that.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 12 is a Wage Adjustment for Non-Affiliate Staff From $12.25 an hour to $14.25 an hour, Effective 2019 through 2020 School Year. Do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
I think the biggest reason there's a jump here is because we're having problems finding substitute. They can find other jobs at that lower rate. And some of these jobs are not, you know, they're difficult hours, middle of the day, different things. So to enhance, entice them to stay with us and you with us, that that's why the, the larger increase there.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Aye.
Okay, let's do that again. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 13 is a Grade Level Change for Elementary School Cafeteria Servers. Job Description 706, Change from Grade 2 to Grade 3 Due to Job Description Changes Effective 2019 to 2020 School Year. Do we have a motion to approve that change?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any comments or?
Let me, Elaine.
Well, and all that information was presented during the School Board Work Session last, during the last meeting on June 10th. And then also the supporting documents that we discussed from Lance was also placed in there. And basically, our elementary servers will be doing more during their job shift so that we can present fresher food and obviously better quality food for our elementary students versus having all the baking and heating done at the Kennedy Secondary School, then moved over to the elementary school, which they may not be consuming until hour, two hours later. And so it's just, it's just creating a better food product for our students to consume.
Which, and then of course, will help eliminate some waste because you aren't getting a solid piece of something.
Absolutely.
You're not getting.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 14 is a Revision to the 2019-2020 Fergus Falls Public Schools Grades K-12 Student Parent Handbook, Adding ISD 544 Honor Roll Recognition Program Information. Would somebody like to offer that motion to approve?
I'll so moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And discussion?
Yeah, that actually has been the practice at the end of the year. And it's just trying to promote academic achievement, promote attendance for being here and get some recognition. So that's a, that's a good thing.
Very good. Good positive. With that, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That concludes our regular school board meeting. Our next regular school board meeting will be Monday, July 15th, 7:00 a.m. here at our community room at Kennedy Secondary School. We do have a public hearing on lease purchase agreement and related certificate of participation for acquisition and renovation of target building. That will be Monday, July 15th, also at, at 2019 at 8:00 a.m. here at the Otter Community Room, Kennedy Secondary School. And then there will be a school board retreat on Monday, July 15th at 8:15 a.m. Right here at the Otter Community Room at Kennedy Secondary School. And following the adjournment of this meeting, we will go into a work session to do buildings and grounds. And I think it's appropriate, before I ask for adjournment, to say today is a bittersweet. This is Superintendent Ness's last school board meeting, for his career, but for us. And we just want to just thank you again, Superintendent Ness, for your 13 years and for your dedication to the district and to the children. And I wish you and Karen the very best in your retirement. And just thank you for your faithfulness and, and just being an advocate for public education for the kids at Fergus Falls.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Second that?
I'll second that. It's unanimous.
It's unanimous. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn.